Mr. Wardell.
Hi guys, Matt Wardell, Ward 1. Kind of got a lot of stuff I want to cover and three minutes isn't a long time. I want to start by saying first, and a little more directly than Dan did, nothing I am saying here or ever have said or will say here publicly, privately, anywhere should be taken as a call to violence of any kind. I'm a person of peace, I'm a Christian, I'm committed morally and spiritually to nonviolence.
All those people who have wronged others will be eliminated. And I always wonder if they even knew what the heck they were creating when they created men like me and people. And whether in this life or the next, I will dedicate myself to hunting you out and exterminating you. Nation, and I will hunt you down so not even the stones will hide you. The very atoms will sing out your presence to me and I will eliminate you from the fabric of reality and you will never see another life again. That is my promise.
I also want to address, because I've already heard from Mr. Ryan Nielsen, the guy whose video led to my friend's arrest.
So you know that it's me?
He's been looking through my stuff, so I want to let you guys know I'm chronically ill, I've dealt with addiction, I hope it isn't used against me. So I want to talk about shared understandings. Last week, Ms. Jones, or not last week, the last time we were here, Ms. Jones responded to someone concerned for Brandon and said that efforts or arrangements, I don't remember exactly, but were being made to get Brandon help. 24 hours later, less than 24 hours later, Brandon was in jail. And being charged with what amounts to terrorism, looking to exact undue influence through fear in a political matter. It's the textbook definition of terrorism. Okay? And this is because Mr. Ryan Nielsen, who's now been in my social media and sending me messages, edited a video. Made in a brain injury-induced manic state. It was about 14 or 15 minutes in his totality, whittled it down to about five. And sent it to you all unbidden with no explanation. No context. You say this is Brandon's crime, and you have him locked up for it right now. As the so-called threatened parties, you could end this tomorrow. You could go and say you recognize the threats for what they are. The result of brain damage. Okay? But you don't.
You have three minutes, Mr. Wardell.
Give me just 30 more seconds. You don't, because it's not about Brandon, it's about sending a message. Anyone who stands up like he did will get the same kind of help you arranged for him. That's what I'm afraid of now. That's why none of my friends are here. We're afraid of you.
Point of order. Not going to take the personal attacks on council members or the inaccuracies around this, so.
Mr. Katos. Ms. Anderson.
I think it is super important that we do not continue to propagate misnomers. We all sit here in positions of power and our words matter. And I think it's really important that the public knows that we had absolutely nothing to do with putting anybody behind bars. We do not have that authority, we are legislators. It is the county attorney who on his own, looking at the evidence, decided to make that judgment, because that is his job, not our job. And we were not consulted on it, we were not informed about it until after it had happened, and we cannot do anything about it. And I think that to imply otherwise just continues to sow divisions in our community. We do not have the ability to, if we don't like what someone has to say at public comment, to retaliate against them. We have rules, we have laws, and everyone needs to follow them. And I think that we need to continue to, in whatever ways we can, to perpetuate that because our words matter and we have a limited, I love that Councilwoman Jones said this a couple weeks ago and I have been using it ever since, our decision-making space, our decision-making box is very small, very limited, and it does not extend into the criminal justice system. And I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Now, you have PTSD, right?
I've been diagnosed with it, yes.
So why is that? Because, you know, people will wonder, hey, you weren't in the combat.
And again, I spoke with psychologists in the US Air Force, who, they've actually found that PTSD levels among operators, Brandon is a rarity if you like, and that he has been diagnosed with PTSD. What the Air Force found is that levels of PTSD among DRO operators were actually about the same level as the background US population.
You are very angry, aren't you?
I am very angry.
Is it partly because you feel damaged? I mean, do you feel a very changed individual as a result of what you've been through over the last seven, eight years?
Of course. I lost my innocence. I lost the person that I wanted to be. I no longer dream, I no longer am able to see myself having a very comfortable or enjoyable future. I see my life as a struggle.
See, the weird thing is, you say all this to me and you talk about the damage done to yourself, you have never been anywhere near a real battlefield. Admittedly, you were in Iraq for a few months, but you know, you've never seen war from the point of view of an active battlefield, you've just been looking at video screens.
Ms. West. Mr. Al Sper.
I want to quickly apologize for getting out of decorum during the discussion on the claims. I was particularly upset about the last part of public comment where there was an accusation that actions by a member of council hadn't played any role whatsoever in an arrest. It's absolutely false and I feel a responsibility for all of my colleagues in this body in general. And despite wanting to say very little about this, that crossed the line for me and I was carrying that over into the subsequent discussions, so my apologies for that.
Ms. Basara. Ms. Hart.
Thank you, Brian, for your comment. I wanted to read a letter that I wrote. Dear Brandon, I just wanted to let you know that I'm thinking about you, thinking about how sorry I am that this is where you are. I imagine what you were going through, but really I have no reference on which to fall. I imagine you were lonely and afraid. I am not defending your actions because what you did was wrong and it caused fear and intimidation, but I am advocating for compassion and fairness. I know from spending time with you that you are not a violent person, but there are times where you have said violent things and that scares people. As a city, we have to respond, we have to act to ensure the safety of our citizens, but we must also act with compassion and fairness. I ask for compassion and fairness because I know you and I know the sorts of things you struggle with. I also understand in my own way what it is like to struggle with mental health issues for myself and family members. I know that the person who took those actions that day is an irrational form of you. Having PTSD, a traumatic brain injury, and depression is a horrific cocktail of mental health issues that no one deserves and few can possibly comprehend. As you may recall, I have mild episodic cases of depression of my own. Most of the time, it feels like an inversion in the Missoula Valley. It just shows up one day as feeling gray, and when the inversion lifts, all is well. And sometimes it has a crippling effect and self-destructive tendencies. But I realized that I really didn't know the symptoms of PTSD, so I looked it up. Memories of the event can be triggered by sounds and experienced as nightmares or flashbacks, and this causes people to feel anxious, guilty, afraid, or suspicious. These emotions can play out as panic attacks, chills, shaking, headaches, and heart palpitations. Some people avoid talking about the event or being around people who insist that you talk about it, and this causes people to stray away from others, causing detachment and loneliness. Behavior changes can make you feel emotionally more intense, and irrational and angry outbursts are not uncommon. Many find it hard to focus. Feelings of danger and being under attack can ruin concentration and keep you from finishing every day tasks. This leads to sleeplessness, which only exasperates these behaviors all the more. And mood swings aren't filled with flashbacks, they tend to be filled with negativity. Feelings of hopelessness, numbness, shame, and guilt are not uncommon, and relationships with loved ones are low in distance. However, I have seen you for who you really are when the mental illness does not cloud your personality or judgment. You are a man with goodness in his heart, wanting to make this world a better place. You were trying to fight income inequality. And like you, we here on City Council share that desired goal. We do the best we can with the limited tools and the resources we have. Can we do better? Absolutely. But we must do so collaboratively rather than against one another, because no one wins that fight. You may be asking what I want to see happen. I hope the charges are dropped. Due to your mental illness that contributed profoundly to your actions, time spent in prison would only further demoralize a soul and cost us more financially and socially. I would request that you obtain regular mental health help and therapy, but I also want you to serve others through another avenue, to either volunteer at a nonprofit organization or join a service club for a year. Pay it forward and goodwill comes of that. Criminal justice reform is hard work, and if I don't fight for you, then who?
Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you people who I relied on and who I went to for help and you did this to me! Because if I responded in the same way, I would fucking have killed many of these people that have harmed me, and I would be justified with it. According to all the old laws and all the ancient laws, I would be fucking justified in going on a bloody fucking killing spree.
Ryan, I'd love to fly.
Former drone pilot, what he thinks of this assessment. Joining us in the now is ex-Air Force pilot and drone operator Brendan Bryant. Brendan, thank you so much for joining us. How do you feel? I hope you heard our previous guest, he was from nodrones.com, calling drone operators essentially murderers.
Well, I just want to clarify first that I'm not a pilot, I was a sensor operator.
You're basically saying that drone operators are not pilots, am I correct?
No, there is a pilot, but there's two people that fly these things, and one is a pilot and one is not, and I was the not.
So what does the not do exactly?
We didn't know it at the time, but candy would actually lead to the most significant achievement of Rhino's career, which was, somewhat ironically, documented in the letter of reprimand. This is a long story, but it's an important one, and although I know that many of you know parts of it, no summation of Rhino's career would be complete without it, so I will relay it to you now. In the spring of 2011, Rhino went into work, and when he heard what the mission was, he concluded that it violated the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment provides, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. No person. He informed leadership of his objection, he was switched to another mission, and for several months thereafter, he continued to fly other missions, he was just scheduled into other missions.
Jonas Brothers are here. They're out there somewhere. Sasha and Malia are huge fans, but boys don't get any ideas. I have two words for you: predator drones. You will never see it coming. You think I'm joking?
How will Obama defend his secret kill list next week at the foreign policy debate?
That's an American citizen that's being targeted without due process of law, without trial, and he's underage, he's a minor.
I would suggest that you should have a far more responsible father if they're truly concerned about the well-being of their children.
You said that he was responsible for these things.
Yes, but again...
Is there going to be any evidence presented?
You know, I don't have anything for you on that.
Do you not see at all, does the administration not see at all, how a president asserting that he has the right to kill an American citizen without due process and that he's not going to even explain why he thinks he has that right is troublesome to some people? What do you think constitutional law professor Barack Obama would think of this?
I think he spoke about it today.
According to NBC News, White House Press Secretary Sean Spicer has said that no American citizens will be targeted in military strikes under President Donald Trump, suggesting a break from one of the Obama administration's most controversial efforts.
Then the commander decided that approach was no longer going to work, and he told Rhino he had either fly the mission or he would go the quote-unquote "legal" route. So he gave Rhino the order to fly the mission.
You are the American people, you are this country. Our government is simply in power for a short period of time. They are not the country. The press is not the country. The pulpit is not the country. You are the country.
The 2011 marked the first targeted killing of an American citizen by a US drone.
We decided to fly armed drones over Yemen and we were going to kill them, and while, like, we were told pretty much every day that this guy was a traitor to the United States, it was brought to my attention while we were doing this that that's a violation of the Constitution of the United States. And I had this kind of elation, this kind of like, I was doing my job, they had finally molded me to be what they wanted me to be. And I said, "Well, what's the problem? Leadership says that this man is a traitor, he deserves to die. We are hunting him down for a reason."
Look at what Brandon says next. He says, "And because I violated that constitutional right, I became an enemy of the American people." Man, that's powerful.
And Rhino refused. He brought in a witness, he gave Rhino the order to fly the mission, and Rhino refused in front of a witness. Rhino then got an area defense counsel, smart move, and the commander decided that the order should be repeated in writing. I will never forget, ever, sitting at the Red Lobster in Colovis, New Mexico, when we got the call that he needed to go into the box office to review this order in writing and sign his refusal in writing. But he did, and it was all handled very calmly and professionally on all sides.
We also had issues, obviously, concerning lethal force against US citizens. I'd like to encourage the law students here who are thinking about a career, to think about a career serving your country. You'll find it remarkably rewarding. And so I said the same thing to a group of Yale Law students about two years ago in a speech sort of comprehensive like this, and what was interesting about it is that the national media covering the speech, I ended the speech the same way, the national media covering the speech headlines were, "DOD lawyer Pentagon lawyer defends drone strikes."
Addressing any one of these challenges is a tall order. Addressing all of them at once is a monumental task, but that's what the dedicated men and women of the Department of Homeland Security do every day. And today, I'm proud to announce my choice to lead them. An outstanding public servant who I've known and trusted for years, Mr. Jay Johnson.
But I personally was terrified. I thought for sure we were headed to a court martial. I did not know where this was going to end up.
I was wondering whether, at the time that you were a drone operator, did you witness fellow drone operators refusing to execute strikes?
Well, here's a story about a young girl. She's actually, like, we kind of, her and I have been in a disagreement since I started talking, afterwards she was like, "I'm never going to shoot again. You can do whatever you want to me, but if I'm in a position to shoot, I will never take that shot ever again." And then she was like, "I'm going to go see a psychologist too." So she was the fir-, she's actually probably the one of the first people that I knew that actually stood up for herself in the drone world. And so she went and saw a psychologist, but I didn't see her for about a month and a half, maybe two months.
So you would get a dishonorable discharge if you made the mistake of having enough honor to care about killing innocent civilians?
Correct.
Yeah, well, welcome to our...
If you question the system, then they would discharge you. And then she came back and started flying again and nothing happened. They didn't take her clearance from her, they didn't kick her out, they didn't give her dishonorable discharge. And that was in middle of 2010, maybe, end of 2010. Actually, we're going to go back further to when I was in training, there were two people that filed for conscientious objector status and they were denied, and they were just put in a back room to file paperwork for the rest of their enlistment. And so that was kind of a fear factor too, was if you wanted to get out of the program because you felt uncomfortable, they were just, they weren't going to let you go and they were going to just, you weren't going to get promoted, they were just going to put you away in the back room and you were just going to be left to rot. And I think that's how they really control most of the members of the drone community is through fear and intimidation.
My question is to Brandon Bryant. Have you ever considered turning in yourself to the International Criminal Court for war crimes? So, just to sense more, as much as I admire what you speak out and what you do and suggest somebody else cut the fiber optic cables, I cannot believe you think it's just that if I go out and murder somebody, I go to jail, and you choose to redeem yourself spiritually.
I don't even believe in the rule of law, to be honest. I'm more anarchist than anything else, the more that I progress through this journey of life. And so I feel like if someone's going to punish me, it's going to be you guys. It's not going to be some bullshit official who has no idea what the hell's going on other than some rules that are made up to keep people in line. And the only way, the only way to fix the problem isn't to do, isn't to stand in front of a judge or a jury and to make an example of myself. If I, what am I going to do if I'm going to be sitting in prison? Right? What would I accomplish? I would be able to do nothing. I wouldn't be able to talk, I wouldn't be able to...
And I don't believe that any court system is going to punish me worse than I would punish myself.
On the other hand, I wanted to jump to Chantal and ask you, can we imagine a future where Brandon could be prosecuted for war crimes?
I've actually, just before I pass this on, like, I've actually stood in front of the UN and said, "You guys can persecute me for war crimes if you want to," and they said it wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, now, this is not an easy, an easy question. Let's say that, as I said before, I believe that the targeted killings that are committed, well, through drones or with other methods in contravention to the principles that I said exist, the responsibility of the pilot himself is there, but from my point of view, it's more important to focus on the responsibility of the commanders, of those who gave the orders, of those who planned the unlawful operation. But of course, also the pilot, the individual soldier who shoots, if he realizes, she realizes that the order he/she received was unlawful, has an obligation to disobey the order.
We are not in a gray zone, can amount to war crimes. Someone, even if he was obeying an order, can be held responsible for war crimes because there is a principle in our day which is recognized over any domestic legislation is more important than international law, which is that if you realize that the order that you have been given is unlawful, you have to disobey, otherwise you are complicit in it. So this is said shortly.
So this is said shortly.
After a few months of waiting on pens and needles, well, it felt like a few months and maybe a few weeks. However, the command decided to issue Rhino a letter of reprimand. That was both good and bad. On the upside, an LOR, Rhino had so many, we named our ferret "LORS," spelled L-O-R-S. On the downside, an LOR did not resolve anything. It didn't adjudicate the lawfulness of the order. If he'd been given it again or a similar mission, the cycle would have simply repeated itself. So Rhino decided that the only thing he could do was to resign his commission, even though he had 15-plus years of active-duty service at that time. So in the three days that you have to respond to an LOR, he filled out also this resignation form that he found online and paperwork. And when he responded to the LOR, he delivered that as well to the squadron commander. And Rhino went for a year, and his security clearance was suspended, and he was taken up the flight line at that time. And he went for a year and worked, and I use that term very loosely, in the CE squadron. Bear in mind, he's of religious nature. While we waited to see what would happen. What we did not know is at that time, the command, in addition to suspending his clearance, had attempted to permanently revoke it, probably with an eye of separation thereafter. So we are waiting in limbo. I'm sitting in my office. I get a call. Rhino says, "I just got a call. I have to report to the commander's office." I'm not going to lie, my heart sank. My experience, that call had not led to flowers and roses. So he went in, and a few hours later, he called me and he said, "The Air Force rejected the command's attempt to revoke my security clearance. They want me out of Canada as quickly as possible, and they're offering me Korea with a follow-on to the White Jet assignment of my choice." I'm sure my colleagues could hear me yell, "Take the assignment!" from down the hall. And so we were off to Korea.
Because being, you know, back in 2015, there was this man named Rick Reinerson who started attacking me.
My name is Rick Reinerson. I'm a former drone pilot. I once refused a mission because it violated the Constitution of the United States. I would like to now speak with you about Brendan Bryant.
Online, and how they treated me and the fact that there's no one else really that has, of who I've been with, has really reached out. And I've been really fucking pissed about that. Like, I want to punch them all in the gut. Like, I just want one solid fucking hit right below the solar plexus. But I'm really, one thing that, the reason I bring Rick up is because like, I wanted to rely on this guy because he was, because his history is, while he's also this huge dick hole, he also obeyed a command that he felt was wrong, and I feel like that needs to be honored. And one thing about that is that's, I didn't do that. I never once said no. And I know where that comes from for me. And I have to say that I admire Rick Reinerson for that because...
So when did you start feeling bad about this program? And why? Why did it start to eat away at your...
Because I lost that respect for life.
So you'd become an assassin?
I'd become heartless. I'd become, and it, it like...
You felt like you were a hitman now?
Not necessarily. I just felt like a sociopath, actually, if you want to say that. I wanted to kill these people. These were bad guys. These, I mean, we had their, a list of their accomplishments underneath them, but instead of being like, "Man, I, like, these guys need to die, but I'm really sad that we have to execute extreme measures," I was like, "Man, I can't wait for these guys to die."
And yet you didn't quit at that point. You kept doing it. What made you finally quit? What was it?
One day, it was late 2010, we had a wall that had five pictures on it of top Al Qaeda leaders. And I remember walking in one day, and I kind of stopped and looked at one of these guys, and I was like, I was like, "Man, which one of these motherf--s is going to die today?" I was just a soldier. I was just a warrior who had done his job, done his duty as best as he could. And at the very end of my commitment, I realized what we were doing is wrong.
What made you think about what you were doing and eventually decide to stop?
It was accumulation of a lot of things, actually. Mostly that the leadership was, lacked quality. But as soon as everyone's contract gets up, they get out. No one wants to deal with anyone else's bullshit. No one wants to sit there while, and do this job day in and day out, and our command saying, "Yeah, continue leaning forward. Continue doing the job. You're protecting guys on the ground. You're doing, you're doing an awesome job." And then our command goes off, and they party all the time, and they don't even show up to work, and they're getting flight pay. There's assholes in my chain of command who are getting flight pay for only flying once every 30 days, and I wasn't getting flight pay. And I was flying every frickin' day of the week. So all the leadership in our squadron did the minimum amount of flying that they had to, and they were getting paid to do it. They were getting flight extra pay, so they're getting flight pay and stuff. Those of us young airmen didn't have a flying AFSC, we weren't getting flight pay. So, but the reason I got out actually originally was because my contract, right? I spent six years in active-duty military, and my contract was up. And then I decided I wasn't going to re-enlist. You know, doing research on this man's background, I feel like, you know, I don't really give a fuck about his upbringing, but his attitude is that of a fighter pilot, for sure. Like, the worst of the worst types of fighter pilots. Like, the ones that know, like, that watched Maverick and emulate Tom Cruise instead of Iceman.
That's not what I heard. No, we did. We got gesture. No, no. Below the hard deck does not count. Hard deck my ass. We nailed that son of a bitch. You guys really are cowboys. What's your problem, Kazansky? You're everyone's problem. That's because every time you go up in the air, you're unsafe. I don't like you because you're dangerous. That's right. Nice, man. I am dangerous.
I'll be quick and dirty with this one, because Rick Reinerson is a government slut who likes to take that fat military industrial cock and watch as his wife is cut by her and better men. Rick Reinerson continues to paint a target on my back. He's been stalking me and harassing me ever since I began the whistleblowing, began blowing the whistle on America's disastrous drone program. He stalked me online and done everything he can to ruin my reputation. My biggest opponents and the ones that get in my way are veterans. Rick Reinerson is a veteran. He was in the program. He knows how fucking shitty he is. I don't understand what his fucking issue is unless he's being paid by the government to do what he's doing. Being a troll, being an asshole. When this guy first came into my life, just like everyone else that I did, I accepted him into my life, hoping that he was a fucking major. He could have helped. He could have gotten everything, everything could have been better. And instead, he let his fat fucking ego get in the way. I hate the fact that someone like Rick Reinerson, whose wife is a lawyer, the stupid cunt, he can sit there and do whatever he wants and not face any repercussions. And I was hurt because I had hope for this guy. I mean, hope for us all. I thought he was like, "Help me, Obi-Wan Kenobi. You're my only hope." I really felt like I was just out there fighting a battle again by myself. Whenever I think of Rick, I'm not even mad, I'm just sad. I'm just fucking sad. There's no one that loves me. There's no one that will probably ever love me, and I'm okay with that. I was hoping that I would find someone like, someone, that's, if Rick wanted to ever know what my highest ideals for him were, I wanted in him to be like Jean-Luc Picard, who is the only real person that I would have ever considered to have served, to serve under, and it'd been an honor. I wanted that. I wanted him to be that person who I can say that I served under someone who I admired, even if it wasn't directly, like, I would have worked with him and... And I actually really have to do think, the people that have caused very much problems in my life because, my enemies, because they've shown me what it is that I believe and I stand for and what truly is evil in this world. Rick Reinerson is an evil, fat, fucking piece of shit. Our politicians and this people that are evil are my enemy. And if I have to continue fighting alone, then I guess that's what I will do. And this time, I'm not tormented. I'm not being chased by my demons or my ghosts or my thoughts or my emotions. And I guess that's where the real fun begins. Yeah. If you don't hear from me, good luck. And if you're my enemy, go fuck yourself. If I don't kill you in this life, I'll kill you in the next. You will submit, and you will die.
In December, the Pick Your Battles YouTube page posted a video titled, "Brandon Bryant Promises to Eliminate People Over the Next Year." The man in the video goes on to say he will quote, "hunt down and eliminate members of the Missoula City Council and the United States military." Bryant is well-known to city council and law enforcement, and last month brought an apparent weapon to a city council meeting.
I swore an oath not to kill another human being again.
Bryant claims to be an Air Force veteran. City Council President Brian Von Losberg says these threats are being taken very seriously.
It can be traumatizing. I'm the parent of a second grader. I look at almost everything through the lens of, you know, being a parent and a partner to my wife. So it has a real effect.
It's unclear what prompted these threats, but they seem to be related to development proposals approved by city council.
It was pretty graphic.
Interim Chief of Police Mike Collier says the police department has issued a written notice of trespass to Bryant, meaning that he can no longer attend public meetings held by the city council.
Well, we immediately followed up on it. He explained that his purpose with the intent was not really to carry out harm, that he was just frustrated and he wanted some attention to the frustration he was experiencing with the city council.
Chief Collier also says MPD has had a police presence at city council meetings for about a year now, and his officers offered to connect Bryant with any necessary resources. In Missoula, Katie Miller, MTN News.